Right, good morning, everyone. We now continue our day and move on to the Council Workshop of Water Services Delivery Plan and Commitment Agreement. So, looking forward to going through and seeing where we've got here. Obviously, you know, I think this is good to see this information. We're probably, as elected members, a little bit disappointed that we feel like we didn't see it earlier, but it's good now to have an opportunity to discuss this as we're trying to make some pretty big decisions over the next month or so. So, I'll hand over to you running the, Christine, and Christine will run through the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Catherine and I will do this together. So, the agenda, we're going to give you an overview of what a Water Services Delivery Plan is and what the requirements are, the process for certification and approval of a Water Services Delivery Plan, and then, once you've approved it, the process that DIA goes through to get to a point where you have an accepted Water Services Delivery Plan under the legislation. Catherine's going to work through the financial sustainability statements. So, under the legislation, you need to make a series of statements around financial sustainability. It covers a number of areas, so Catherine's going to work through each of those, what they mean, and what you effectively will be attesting to in making the approving the Water Services Delivery Plan, so you understand what it is that you've been asked to do. We'll work through the commitment agreement in terms of what it is, what it seeks to achieve, and the content. We would suggest, and we have separately circulated to a copy of a working draft commitment agreement that's been discussed at a staff level between the three councils. We would suggest if you want to talk about any of the detail, and we are asking for feedback from you, that that does get, we would suggest to you that that should be done enclosed, so that you can then have conversations with your respective partners, rather than that happening through a public forum, the detail through closed, but that's your decision. And then, we're just going to cover next steps and sort of where to from here, if you're comfortable. So, just in terms of what is a Water Services Adoption Process, so, under the Act, there needs to be a compliance statement, which is done by the Chief Executive. Basically, those statements around that the plan is true and accurate, that it has all the components that are required, so there are a series of content requirements that we need to comply with, and there is a template that DIA have developed that we are using. And it must include also a high-level implementation plan, and that's included in the draft statement of commitment. The plan is predominantly Taronga City Council's information, so, which is Parts B, C, and D, and we'll work through each of the sections shortly. Based on your resolutions to date, that currently you're continuing down a preferred pathway of a joint multi-council water organisation, we are preparing the draft on the basis that it would be joint, and therefore, Parts A and E contain joint information. You have not yet made your final decision, and that's the 14th of July. So, if at that council meeting you decide not to pursue a joint water organisation, we would have to modify the working draft of the Water Services Delivery Plan to reflect whatever your decision is. So, we're just working now off your current resolutions around your preferred direction, because that's the direction that we've got from you. So, just, I hope that's clear as to where we are and why we're there. Just in terms of what you won't be signing off, you're not signing off the content of another council, and we have a slide later on which talks about the exclusions or how we're recommending you would deal with having information from other councils included in the Water Services Delivery Plan, which you're signing off, and what statements you would do, so that you don't actually give sign-off on others. You're not forming a view on the decisions of the other councils. Similarly, they won't be forming a view on your information, and you're not certifying their information. So, we're working together with the other councils to dovetail and bring in, but keep your approvals clear as to where the information's come from and who's signing each of those off respectively. All the financial information that's included and that Catherine will speak to later in the presentation has been based on the Taronga City Council financials, and that has been workshopped with you recently. The only change is to move it to a 1 July 2027 date of commencement of the water organisation, rather than 1 July 2026, which is where we were previously, and that's because that's really the only realistic timeframe. So, if we, if you're comfortable with that introduction, any questions on any of that? Happy to keep rolling. Yep, okay. So, the Water Services Delivery Plan, so, what we've done is just outlined in the next few slides what the content is. We're actively working on the content and including bringing together the numbers from the three councils. We expect to be in a position by Friday to give you the working draft of that, of all of the, all of the sections of the Water Services Delivery Plan for you to have a look at. But this is the, what sits in each of them, and we're sort of colour-coded, anything that would include the financials of the other two councils, assuming Western Bay also makes a decision to proceed, the green colours, and the stuff that's only in blue would only be statements that relate solely to Taronga City Council, not the joint councils. And this is based on the advice from DIA on what they're expecting to see in terms of joint and standalone.
So, Christine, just a question on that. Obviously, with a ring-fenced model to start with, why is there combined numbers? Because isn't it each entity would have to sustain, or can you...
No, it's the entity, the CCO, has to meet those financial sustainability tests. So, while we are, if we had partners that were significantly non-sustainable, and it meant the average was non-sustainable, then the entity would be a non-sustainable.
But surely, yeah, you've got, everyone's got to be financially sustainable, effectively.
So, each council has to prepare its own financials, and they have to attest that their own financial sustainability test is met, which is the ones we're going to work with you shortly for TCC, and then, they're all combined, so A plus B plus C equals D, which is the combined, and at a combined level, it must also meet the test. And, well, it seems logical, the legislation requires us to demonstrate that, and that's why this information. And then, we've got some proviso statements to protect you in respect of the numbers that have come from the other councils, because you haven't done any due diligence on those yet, and you don't know about, and so, whether they, and there's no reason to believe they're not accurate, but it's not reasonable to expect you to attest to that when they're not your numbers. So, we will talk about how we're proposing to manage that for you, so that you're only making statements for which you've been able to satisfy yourself that that's reasonable.
Krala.
Yeah, just seeing what we're talking about there, I'll just ask the question I had, which is, some other councils have talked very confidently about DIA having seen their numbers and effectively given, I don't know how you'd describe it, but the green light, you know, so although it won't happen until after 3rd of September, when the plans are formally submitted, there is a sort of a strong indication made in public that the DIA have seen the numbers, are happy with them. So, in our case, firstly for ourselves, but secondly for our prospective partners, have we, or when will we, likely be able to get the sort of green light indication from DIA? Or will that only happen after the 3rd of September?
So, TCC has talked to one of the DIA representatives, has looked at the financials and is comfortable. That person is also broadly aware of the other councils, so we will probably submit, and probably this is a Cathy thing on timing, but since we have the financials combined, we would intend to send something through to the DIA person we've been dealing with, and just get some initial feedback before the final material's submitted. But it's getting quite close to the deadline anyway for the submission of the final material, so, yeah. So, TCC is confident, that person was confident, knowing the other councils, that we are likely to be collectively sustainable. There will be pathways, and not every council will be sustainable from day one, and we haven't looked fully at the other councils, because the material's just come through, and we will advise you whether they are looking like the sort of years that they might not be there, or whatever, but collectively, yeah, the confidence will be sustainable.
So, the next slide talks about, so Part B of the Water Services Plan deals with network performance. So, this is around can you meet your level of service, gives you information about your asset condition, capital expenditure. So, this information has been sourced from Taronga City Council's asset management plan, a long-term plan, infrastructure strategies. So, there isn't any significant departures here from anything that's already effectively council direction or council policy, but it just comes together in one document in a way that meets the requirements of the legislative framework, basically. So, then, the next section is around revenue and financing arrangements. So, this will pull from the financial model that we've shared with you previously, and describes that in words and numbers, so that we, again, it sits there as part of the plan. And then, the financial sustainability test, which is those four areas of financial sustainability, revenue, investment, and financing efficiency, and we're going to work through each of those in this presentation workshop in a little bit more detail, so you can understand those, because that's really where your key approval, if you like, or assertion against the requirements comes through. The next part, if we can move on, this is where, back again, we're back into joint information. So, this is the projected joint financial statements for the combined water entity. So, it'll be our numbers that have been modelled, plus the other two. We've got one council, the other one is either late, it's arrived, so we're going to bring that into the model to get a three-council model, and that's what we'll expect to be able to have available towards the end of the week for you. So, a lot of this stuff is just in time, as everybody's working on it. It's not a matter of that we've got material sitting there we haven't given you, it's under rapid development, just in time delivery, because of the timeframes that we're working on. So, those make up the components. The other element that we're required to do is an implementation plan, must be part of the Water Services Delivery Plan. What's the process that you're going to move from where you are now to your proposed model? And so, all of the councils that are involved in the proposed, what will be the water organisation, need to commit to the arrangements. We get to see Catherine's email. And commit to give effect. So, that's why we're also suggesting or recommending, at the same time as you adopt the Water Services Delivery Plan, you also approve the statement of commitment, because that's the statement that shows that the council is committed, and shows, and we draw from that effectively into the statutorily required implementation plan, and it has to have the key timelines and milestones for delivery. And so, that's what we're also proposing, is sitting as an attachment to the commitment agreement. So, that's how these two pieces start to dovetail together. Comfortable with that? So, we'll go through a bit more detail later on about the commitment agreement. So, in terms of the Chief Executive certification that's required and the council adoption, the CEO was required to certify that the plan complies with the Act and that everything is true and correct. The council must adopt the plan, and at the moment, we're proposing that there's an alignment between the three councils that are currently looking at working together, so that we would all pass resolutions on the 5th of August, in terms of both the adoption of the respective Water Services Delivery Plans and the commitment statements, would all be done on the same day by all three councils. So, that's currently scheduled into a queue. In terms of the, sorry?
Just one quick question, just for the people listening. Irrespective of which model we choose next Monday, we still have to provide a Water Services Delivery Plan to the Minister by the 3rd of September, irrespective of what model. That's just so people understand, we're not doing this because we want to, we're doing this because we're compelled by legislation to do it. So, the plan is part of meeting the requirements of the legislation.
Correct. So, if the council, say, chose to go for a TCC-only water entity, then where I've shown those, the green, the joint in the Water Services Delivery Plan, then they would all change to be TCC-only, so that's why we've been quite specific about which one's in. Or if it ended up, for some reason, being two councils, rather than three councils, if one of the other councils doesn't resolve, it's the same, that would still be joint, but it would only relate to the two. So, while we've got this working draft, we do need to take effect of whatever decision you make on the 14th, pump that back into the Water Services Delivery Plan, and give you one that aligns with whatever decision you make.
Kala, just quickly, and also probably a point of clarification too, for those listening, or that will listen, Thames joined relatively late to this conversation, so is it fair to assume that the Rangapu weren't informed about that relationship prior to their submission in support of a multi-CC?
We were first contacted in late April by TCDC, and, it was late April, I need to check my dates, look this up. So, Thames Coramandal contacted us about having a conversation about potentially going together in a water organisation after the draft consultation document had been adopted, after it'd been out for consultation, and I think it was even after the submissions had closed. So, the engagement that we had with the Rangapu, but also with the broader community, was clearly indicating that there were already discussions with Western Bay, and it outlined that we were looking to a multi-council organisation, and that we were open to other councils joining, or that was the resolutions that you'd passed. Didn't specify those other councils, because at that date, there were no other councils in active conversation. Well, there wasn't, Thames Coramandal wasn't in active conversation, and there was another council we were having some preliminary discussions with, but they weren't far enough that there was something that we could put into a public arena, which was Wakatani, and that came public at a later point. So, we have, after conversation with elected members, set a hui out for next, sorry, this Friday, it was last week, this Friday, to share with Tanga Nafenua what's happened in between times, and a little bit more about local waters done well, because in some instances, all the information's not flowing to Iwi and Hapu. So, that's, and it's quite a wide invite list, I think we're up to about 70 or 80, and we're saying in that invite, if you know of others who would like to attend, are very welcome. So, it's a broad invite with a sort of open extension, so yes.
Yeah, just on that topic, like, I guess I'm struggling to understand why we didn't mention it, given the comments to me at the time by elected members, and I raised this in a meeting with staff and my colleagues, around TCDC being quite happy for that to be disclosed, same with the Western Bay councillors, happy for it to be disclosed that we're in conversations with them, knowing particularly what Hapu and Iwi in this area would think about that, and, you know, for the positive and the maybe not so positive. And it was deemed to be somehow impossible to sort that out. I think, you know, the chickens have come home to roost a little bit on this, but there are two particular points. One is that I'm still, you know, absolutely perplexed with why, when the legislation says the implications of the change proposal for communities throughout, the authorities' district and any collective area involved in the change proposal have to be made public when we consult, and we didn't do that. And I really struggled with that. And secondly, I've had a number of people come to me in the last few days, since that's become more publicly known, probably only about a third, I would guess, would be Manu Nafenua, or Tanga Tafenua. And there are people other than Manu Nafenua who are deeply concerned about that, maybe for different reasons, maybe for the same reason, but there are particular, unique reasons for our Iwi and Hapu here, but there are also reasons for other, you know, implications for other people who have submitted in good faith on our consultation. And I don't think that we have followed the intent of the legislation, and I don't understand how we can say we've followed the letter of it.
So, I can only repeat that when the consultation document was adopted by you, when it went out to consultation, at that stage, there were no conversations happening with Thames Coramandal District Council, so we couldn't consult on it, because it wasn't happening. And we received an email from, do you remember those dates?
I've got it in front of me here. So, our consultation on the LTP, on the annual plan and local waters done well, went from 28th of March to 28th of April, and the email came through from the CEO of TCDC to our CEO and Western Bay CEO on Tuesday, the 29th of April, 12:47. So, we didn't actually have anything until then. That meeting took place, I think, about the 9th of May, so at the time of the consultation, there was no relationship with TCDC whatsoever.
I guess, I understand in terms of that detail, but all I'm saying is that when we were privy to information that TCDC, Thames Coramandal District Council, and Western Bay Plente District Council, and Wakatani District Council were all potential partners, and that we were consulting, and we were told, and the answer to my question was, we were told, we were consulting on a multi-council CCO that could include Thames Coramandal District Council, that was in a public-excluded situation, I was told that, and we didn't make that public. All we needed to do was make that public, we didn't have to make any financial details, we did, we could have said, this is an early indication, we do not know if Thames Coramandal will want to go that way, but we knew that, we knew that significant late days, if not weeks before, I'll have to go back and check. It was discussed in the meetings before we consulted. I'm struggling to understand how we can't say we knew.
So, the basis of not sharing some of that information is that each of the councils wanted to have their own conversations around what they would be doing with CCO, whether or not they wanted to proceed with multi-council or others, and they want to have their own conversations with their community, rather than another council sharing that information on their behalf. So, that was, so that's what we were asked to do by the other councils, and that's what we respected, so it's part of the partnership, is that, whereas Western Bay were very comfortable sharing that information, and we did share that, and we agreed on the wording and how that would look and feel, and we aligned our consultation documents so that they mirrored each other. So, that's...
As a suggestion then, given what's happened, like, is there a way, we've pulled together fairly late in the piece, a workshop for Manu Nafenua, as I understand it, on Friday, but is there a way to piece together something to invite some of the submitters who have made clear to me that they are concerned about this, to actually, who are not included in the Rangapu invitation to have something later this week, or whenever we can do it, to allow them to also share their views from the wider community? Because, yes, it's an issue for Manu Nafenua, but it's also an issue for non-Manu Nafenua who are feeling very strongly about this matter.
My view is that the consultation was really clear, that council would be open to working with other councils, and that the CCO could include other councils. So, while we weren't specific about the particular ones, that was always part of what we were consulting on. So, it's not as though that element hasn't been consulted, but that's a call for council to make. If you want to go back and get some further feedback, that's something you could choose to do. But it was covered, so it's not like there's a big gap. Clearly, the Tanga Tafenua have some specific matters, and it's deemed appropriate to engage with them.
I guess, to my colleagues then, you know, to me, that would be a good faith and transparent way of doing this, because we know we got different responses from people depending on what they thought might be the combination of councils, and, you know, it was clear there were comments from some of us right at that first meeting, where Western Bay Plente Council was named, and the implications, and certainly, if you, you know, I'd suggest you do do what I've done, which is go around and say to people, who did you think we were meeting? Oh, you're going to partner with Western Bay Council. Did you think we were going to partner with anyone else? No, nobody mentioned anyone else. So, I know some people would have read it more thoroughly and would have thought, oh, this could be anyone, and I have told people at the time, it could be Invaka, or it could be anyone in theory, but they knew the politics of it, and so I would think it would be a good thing to do. So, I will put it out to my colleagues that I would suggest, you know, a workshop where we invite some of the, like, all the people who submitted, especially because we lost 300 submissions out of, we lost a third of the submissions, so we don't even know what they think.
Kala.
Thank you, councillor Krala. Are you able to share some of the views or concerns or opinions?
Well, I think we'll probably just keep moving, because we've got a lot of, but we can, we can take, we can have that conversation offline, so, yeah. We'll keep, yeah, we'll just keep going.
Okay, so, so you have to adopt this plan, we have a statutory timeframe to do that with, and as mentioned, we need a decision so that we can give effect to that. So, that's where this one is at. Then, the next slide is then the DIA process, so the DIA statutorily needs to go through. So, they assess our plans against the legislative requirements, they will consult with key government agencies, including LGFA, Water Services Authority, et cetera. There is a review panel that review and make a recommendation to the secretary, and then, DIA needs to communicate to us by November or December whether they accept those plans and those decisions or not, or whether there's any modifications. So, that's the timing about how we're working, so if that sort of makes sense. So, then perhaps what we want to do is move through the financial sustainability statements and explain to you what those requirements are, and then, when you put Taronga City's financial information, and what that looks like. And over to Catherine.
Microphone, please, thanks.
So, just confirming, the Water Services Delivery Plan will be primarily TCC financial information, which was in the workshop that we covered, and the high-level kind of template summarised a lot of the material. That gets translated into a different template or format for DIA, but it's the same data. And then, for part of it, there will be an identification of what the whole entity will look like, so that's adding up the DIA template that we have, plus Western Bay's, plus Thames Coramandals, to get an entity view. So, it's that simple, what we're putting together, we're not changing in any way any of those financials when we add them up, it's just A plus B plus C. That happens in appendix, in Attachment E. And we changed it only, from what we presented to you on the 24th of June workshop, we've just changed the start date, moved that out a year, so some of the efficiencies and things like that ran through a year later. So, each council is preparing financials based on ring-fenced price paths and financial statements, and that... statements in that way. So it will be possible to see what the price path looks like for each council and I guess what the underlying assumptions to that are and how that looks over the ten years. We will make that information available to you, but you don't need to sign off on Thames Coramandal or Western Bay's. We, we are expecting that it will be sustainable and that has been indicated to us from what D I A have seen of past numbers. They haven't got these latest updated numbers. And also the Martin Jenkins work that was done prior to the consultation for all those councils supported that. So the three sufficiency tests is what they call them, that they'll be reviewing. Firstly, the revenue sufficiency test. So that's if it looks like the revenue would not be sufficient for the organisation to be sustainable, then that's when D I A would sort of go back and say, there's no point in testing more because you haven't got enough revenue. That's more likely to apply in much smaller council situations. And our work would indicate that our revenue sufficiency would meet those tests, but it does involve increases over time, as was outlined in the L T P. The second test is investment sufficiency and that's around the amount of investment proposed. And we'll show a couple of metrics on that next, just to make sure that on an ongoing basis, this entity is sustainable. It's looking after its assets, it's renewing and it's investing what's required. And then the final test, funding and financing sufficiency, is that there will, you know, there's likely to be funding and financing arrangements sufficient to keep meeting that required investment. And we've talked, we talk a lot in council about the debt to revenue ratio and we'll talk about the ratios that will be applied and looking at that, which is that free funds from operations to debt, which we talked about before. So Christine outlined before that we will be suggesting, in the way that that document is put together with the combined attachment and some commentary in the section D around and A around the whole entity sufficiency, that there would be some statements that you'd put into your, or you could consider putting into your water services delivery plan, that in making the financial sustainability statements, you're approving them only in respect of your financials. And that you're placing reliance on the robustness of those councils respective financial, respective financials through their own preparation and approval processes. Yes, so it's down there. So and that in creating a combined C C O, due diligence will be an important step of the process and it does form part of the implementation plan. So while these are being submitted, these financials are being submitted for D I A assessment ahead of that due diligence, in the case of all councils, things will change prior to establishing that C C O and in these negotiation processes. So there may well be change to some of those things. And as it's been outlined to us, D I A will have a post review process where they'll say, okay, you've submitted these, now a year on, what's actually happening and why? And so, because obviously some things will change and the due diligence process might raise some of those areas that you may want to look at mitigations or changes in. So there is flexibility after submission of these numbers. They're not cast in concrete.
councillor Shawler.
Just a quick, on the previous page, the initial thirtieth of June twenty twenty six has been pushed out to thirtieth of June twenty twenty seven coming together. So is this, for the financial sustainability statements, were they always one year after? Or was, has that been pushed out as well?
No, that's just a requirement for the D I A because as I said before, a lot of councils will be working hard to get to that financial sustainability point and looking at their revenues and looking at their investments to reach these tests. So there's just been a bit of, yeah.
councillor Morris.
Thank you, mayor. Just channeling Ronald Reagan a little bit, the trust but verify statement he made in the nineteen eighties around nuclear disarmament with Soviet Union. We're trusting our partner councils to provide accurate and correct financial information. What's the verification step for us as Taronga City Council?
That will be the due diligence process ultimately. We are putting together, so we're meeting with the other councils. We haven't quite put together the whole statements yet, but we are going to have a, just to catch up with the finance leads from those areas, just to make sure we understand some of their numbers and some of their price paths and things, because each council has chosen its own journey. And then we will put out some of that key information to you, just with an understanding of their story, so that that sort of helps that understanding. But yes, the actual, it's not really for us to, it hasn't been for staff definitely to influence other councils. And we would anticipate that the due diligence process, if there was anything that came to light, would be the process that you would use to have those conversations.
deputy mayor, score.
Thank you, Mahe. Sorry, just the end of that, I didn't hear it then. So in terms of if that due diligence doesn't pass, when are we doing the due diligence and what happens if it doesn't pass if we have made a decision next week?
So we would be doing the due diligence after the fifth of August. So we're currently working on a bit of a due diligence plan, which would be scoped up and agreed between the three. If the due diligence raises something, so say there was an issue in your view and one of the other councils, there's a number of ways of doing it. You could say we would to proceed on the basis that one of the conditions is, say for example, you modify your price path, so that there's a modified price path, or that something particular goes into the statement of expectation for the C C O board to address. So that you could edit in conditions through one of the various tools or processes that you have available to you. And you're only able to determine what the appropriate path is once you have done the due diligence. And if you can't satisfy yourself that you're comfortable at the end of all of that, then you could still say, we're not going to proceed to actually establish the C C O either with that partner or at all. So the due diligence process is the process that happens before you actually then put in place the formal structures, set the C C O up, establish it legally, put the board in place, et cetera. So that's.
So it specifically will be specifically said in the plan, if we're going towards a C C O, that if due diligence is not satisfied, then the opportunity exists for a partner to exit.
You could choose to add that into your commitment statement.
I would like that in. I don't know if anyone else would.
We can cover that when we get to the commitment statement.
I know, but these are things that we actually, we hear about now and then we don't check. So it's something I would specifically want. Can we put that as an action? I want to make sure that that is an out clause. But my question was actually on the previous slide.
Can we cover that in the closed section? If you're going to do that closed, but there's some wording, but we'll cover that separately if you're comfortable with that. So yes, it's the sort of thing we can pick up.
Just on these, can we just confirm you are doing these for all three options?
We, we will do it for the preferred option once the decision is made on the fourteenth of July.
The third being which one? You do them for status quo and a Taronga City Council only C C O and a joint?
No, the water services delivery plan is based around your preferred option. So that decision of your preferred option happens on the fourteenth of July. And after that, we will finalize the water services delivery plan with those sufficiency assessments just for the preferred option.
If we have chosen that one.
Yeah. And the modeling shows that actually all three of them meet those.
That was my question. Okay, so the modeling at the moment confirms that we're meeting all of these either way. Right, thanks.
Sorry, just another question around the financial sustainability in the process. Okay, so potentially one of our proposed partners might drop off due diligence audit, whatever. Has D I A indicated what their proposed approach would be? Not only with, you know, potential partners dropping off due to, you know, due diligence, but also the smaller councils in particular, that probably wouldn't meet financial sustainability measures. What's the D I A or government's approach to dealing with all that? Would we have other councils sort of foisted upon us at some later date or some information around that if it's appropriate? Sorry, it's probably not relevant to our position or our proposal, but.
So just to throw in two questions. So if there's a change, so that the current, so assuming you adopt, you want, you approve water C C O with multiple and the other councils are the same, you approve a water services delivery plan that reflects that with three in it, then if for any reason it changes, there's a legislative process, there's a process set out in the legislation about changing your water services delivery plan and you just step your way through that. In terms of if there are councils who don't have a financial sustainability pathway, there are intervention steps in the legislation that enable the government to step in and be directive to councils. I'm just looking at Steve and he's nodding, so I've got that right. I'm not sure that extends to requiring someone else to takes, you know, to join another, but they can step in in respect of a council that's struggling and provide assistance and direction. Sort of different, but the same, similar to sort of the commission type approach where the government looks at something and says, I need to intervene. And so they can step in, that is provided for in the legislation.
Okay, so the first test of revenue sufficiency, we've just put here for you the charging and how it moves through time. So what we would envisage is when we send out the revenue sufficiency, when we send out on Thursday, the information about other councils, it might be helpful to have to understand what's happening in their ring fenced operations with their revenue. So we just thought it's quite a helpful way. You'll have seen these numbers actually in the model and in the consultation, actually. If you look at the total level, I'm sure we're getting quite used to seeing some of these numbers, the inflation inclusive for thousand three hundred and forty-four per connection by twenty thirty-four. So there is a requirement to talk about affordability. And so we, in the model, we did have some affordability measures, we haven't put them here, but that will be talked about in the water services delivery plan, that over time with median income changes and growth, these charges sit below or close to that two percent affordability index. And so that sort of information will also be assessed by D I A, but there is no target of D I A of what affordability has to look like. But again, we can provide, just to give you an understanding of what's happening in each of the potential partner councils, we can provide a summary from that data of how each of them look in terms of revenue and affordability, if that's helpful. So the next test is, oh, yeah.
Just, just to clarify sort of publicly, what are the assumptions, particularly with regards to stormwater, but overall in terms of the split between residential and commercial?
So these calculations, you might need to jump in here, average stormwater, you base that just on connections, an average per connection, yeah.
But sorry, but I mean, is the assumption because you won't, and this is all for a multi-council C C O, so you can't charge using the current model, which is property related, property tax effectively, property rates. So is the assumption to have a C C O mirror a sixty-five, thirty-five split? Or is it to, you know, like, how do you actually figure out, because you've got details in our spreadsheets to support this stuff, around what the split will be? And the split is, you know, just to cut to the chase, the split is going to be worse for residential and better for commercial. So I'm probably concerned that that might be undercooking it for residential and especially for low value residential. So, but I'm still having, and thank you for the meeting with deputy mayor and myself, but I realized I went away and I sort of thought, well, I'm still not clear on what the actual principle that's driving that, the assumption that the C C O will pass on a particular pricing strategy or what would it be?
Can I just jump in? So at the moment, all the financials, for all councils actually, are just at that very high level. What does it cost us to produce stormwater or deal with stormwater, manage those services and then dividing it? So it's very simplistic. What you're talking about is if all the assets went to a C C O and there were rules that it couldn't charge capital value charging for connection to a network, that lower socioeconomic people would be paying a higher share than they currently are when it's a rate because it's under capital value, which is true. We, you haven't made a decision yet on the way in which stormwater services will be passed through, whether it's assets or contracts for services. And so that, those decisions will come through the work streams that start to develop some of this stuff and put that material out. And in the decision on the fourteenth, it's still quite open, as it is for the other councils, that the water, the water service entity will deliver the stormwater services, but the detail of that has not been worked through.
I know it's sort of probably going further than a lot of my colleagues will want, but this is for me a sort of a showstopper in terms of which option is going to be better to choose on the fourteenth. And the implications of this, the more I've looked at it, the more it's, like, it's quite explicit now in the updated act that happened last week, or the updated bill, sorry, that you can't charge, unless I'm misreading it, and tell me if I am, but it's, you can't charge on the basis of property. So therefore, you do have to have some foundational basis for charging. And the, although Auckland Council said capital value is best, they've been effectively overruled by the government. And so, so when you, when you look at what the implications are, like, I'm concerned that the numbers we've been presented will vastly understate the impacts on all residential consumers and could even more understate the impacts on what you addressed Catherine, quite rightly, which is the lower socioeconomic who tend, but not always, have lower valued properties, either to pay rates on or to pay rent, which will effectively, you know, be reflected in those waters charges. So in that context, the people who are suffering the most in our city right now from the costs of housing could stand to have massive increases depending on what happens. Now, what I'm looking at is unless we get presented with the range under the different scenarios and we go into Monday's meeting, understanding what the implications of this are, we really are flying very blind on it if we're making that decision. And it's just, I can't understand why we've had months and months to work this through. We've known this is coming. Why we can't actually get that information in a broad sense, or at the very least, understand what the principles are that drive the numbers we've been presented with? Because I have no idea what's actually driving those assumptions. Is it sixty-five, thirty-five split? Is it based on property still to some extent? You know, what, because the numbers must come from somewhere.
So just in terms of the Monday decision that you need to make, so we're just finalizing the draft agenda for that. So we're just finalizing the draft agenda and at the moment, the wording of the recommended resolutions on this aspect are twofold. One is that confirms the ownership of water and wastewater assets will transfer to the multi-council water organization along with associated debt. And then confirms that whilst the multi-council water organization will deliver stormwater services, further work will be completed to consider other aspects of stormwater management, including asset ownership and charging options. And we would add into the water services delivery plan a statement to that effect so that that's really clear, so that there is a pathway available should you want to, to not transfer the ownership of the asset so that the asset charging could sit with council and could be properly based with a service delivery agreement and a management agreement between the council and the C C O to deal with stormwater. So that's, that's how we're proposing. There's a pathway for it.
Thank you very much for clarifying that.
So under the legislation, in a C C O, they can't charge through capital, but if it stays with council, they can charge. it stays with council, they can charge through capital, is that?
So the, with the way the legislation is worded, it has a five-year transition period where you, you are required to have some, some charging other than exclusively property value, ratable value. And over a period of five years, you need to set charges and transition from, decrease your reliance on the property ratable value. And in the final year, you must use methods other, the final of the five years, a method other than property's ratable value. And then by the start of the sixth year, it must use methods other than property value for the whole charge. So that's that five-year transition period to get off rating value charging methodologies to non-rating value. At the moment, there hasn't been an equivalent change in the local government rating legislation to force the same thing if it was to stay in a council entity. That may or may not change, but at the moment, our understanding is that if, that you could do it within council on a property basis.
Council Crowe.
So water metering in terms of water in and water out, that's an easy one. But stormwater, what was the proposal around that in terms of volume metrics? Because that would be impossible. So they're talking a standardised charge per size of section, which, but then industrial would need a higher because the ground coverage would be far greater than residential, that sort of stuff. What's the?
Right, so I haven't actually read the detail of it, but it would be connection charge based and there may be some ability to assess impact on the network and, and there would probably be some work on that. But it is something that is still unclear, I think, to a lot of councils and to our councils. So that's why we're just left open for now, let's do some more work, bring that through to you through the work streams and kind of give you those options like further down the track.
Some discussion about things like proximity, you'd look at your stormwater management plans and which properties benefit more than others and different catchments and catchment management plans, so it could get quite complex. So those, that's a sort of, those sort of words are used in, in the conversations to date, but there's not clarity. Yeah, Steve's nodding, got that bit right, yeah.
Right, we'll keep, keep moving.
Investment sufficiency, that second test, ideas like renewals investment is consistent with the asset management plans, which project investments to ensure that network level of service are maintained. So that, that work is all done by councils through the infrastructure strategies and the long-term plan. So it's, and getting that asset management plan signed off. So you're sort of attesting, you're attesting to that work that is done internally to say, yes, we're happy with this level of investment in renewals. Investment is sufficient to maintain compliance and to meet any non-regulatory changes. And based on the L T P growth assumptions, sufficient investment is provided for to increase capacity to meet growth demands. So again, when you're signing that one off, it will be in the context of L T Ps and the sort of planning work that has been done in the organisation. So just looking at some of the ratios, the first one, these aren't parcel fail test ratios from D I A, but they're examples of the kind of things that are put together when they're assessing different C C O or council proposals in this context. So over the 10 years, the asset sustainability ratio, which is the amount of renewals divided by the amount of depreciation at T C C is 100%. So certainly our renewals are at, at the level that you would expect. There's timing differences if you look at the totals through the years, some, some years, and that will all be to do with phasing of, of renewals to meet other investments and assessments of, of needed timing. So T C C is looking pretty strong in that space. Another test or potential indicator of investment sufficiency is the asset investment ratio, which looks at total capital expenditure divided by depreciation. And because T C C is a growth council with a lot of pressure to deliver more infrastructure, it sits well above the 100% in the asset investment ratio. So average 352% over that 10 years. And then the last sufficiency test is the funding and financing test. And this is where, in the past, we'd looked at debt to revenue ratios for the waters entity. They're looking at free funds from operations against debt. So free funds from operations is sort of, I guess, the funds you get, so your operating surplus plus the cash that comes from depreciation, plus a portion of D Cs is able to be identified, recognised and that 75% of our development contribution revenue can be recognised in that free funds from operations against debt. So for a council that has, or a council group that has over 50,000 connections, the L G F A has said it must have at least F F O to debt ratio of at least 8%. The average for T C C is 9.4%. And a second test, which is your cash interest coverage ratio must at least be 1.5 times. And for T C C, the average is 1.75 times. If, if you look at the model or the, we had a dashboard that we presented, submit calculated for each year, that we remained above that 1.5% minimum and, and that helped to determine that price path that we had in that model. And that price path is a lower price path under a C C O than it is in-house. Okay, so timeframe for combined information using the D I A template. So we will aim to circulate for you along with the draft towards services delivery plan on Friday, that financial information, so the party, which is the financials all added together, and then some of the summary information using the kind of tables that we've included here, comparing T C C with the other partners individually and then what it looks like collectively, just to help you understand. And we'll give some sort of description of the different stories of each of those councils. And any questions on any of that?
Thanks, Mia Ma. So just two questions, depreciation is going to be fully funded in all three councils?
We'll let you know on Friday. I haven't looked at the other, so it will be fully funded in T C C. I haven't looked at the other councils financials yet.
And second one, we did have a bit more conversation about the, the cost model. Thank you for that. Couple of things came up, I think we're talking about 10 million to set up a joint C C O, is that correct? And is that between the three councils?
Cathy, do you have any update on that?
I was just confirming what, what the cost of T C C is to set up the C C, the joint C C O, and if that's shared amongst the three, or is that just a T C C cost?
So your current budgets on the basis that we're still waiting for decisions would be about 6.1.
Sorry, not used to speaking in this type of environment. Normally just yell at home.
Can you just, can you just start, just repeat that so we get it all?
Okay, so we've done, we've done a, have been doing budgets based on setting up five separate work streams and having a joint overlay across all of that. So the shared costs, we are looking at about 6.1 million. This doesn't include any digital spend, but that 6.1 million would be shared across the three councils. And the percentage is still to be nailed down, but we're looking at, in the vicinity of about 64% for T C C and the other smaller councils are 16 and 20% respectively. But there's quite a lot of shared costs in that in terms of program director, work stream leads, and then subject matter experts that sit underneath those.
And why would you exclude digital when we know that that's a cause for concern at T C C in general and a $51 million cost per year? So why would that be excluded?
Because we haven't, we haven't come to a, a decision as to what that might look like in terms of any sort of shared opportunities with any partner councils outside of the, the three, the multi-C C O that we're looking at at the moment. So it's, it's an unknown for us at the moment while we're awaiting feedback from both Watercare and from Hamilton City Council in terms of doing some sort of shared arrangements, et cetera. So there's a number of unknowns in that aspect at the moment.
So we will know something more before next week's decision?
Well, we're hoping this week we'll get some, a little bit more clarity on what and decisions being made from Watercare in terms of extending our current arrangements and/or Hamilton City Council working with us to do something in a, in a joint perspective.
Okay, and so last question, just the, we also talked about having up to $9 million in stranded overheads over three years. So both the 6.1 plus the potential digital cost plus the potential stranded overhead. So this is where overheads are currently charged to the people that are waters and would not be, but we wouldn't lose the overhead charge yet. So those are all included in the financial model that's saying that it's going to be cheaper in the end to have the water services delivered under a joint C C O.
Yes, so the, the material that we presented at the workshop included all those financials and the information on that dashboard. The water services delivery plan does not talk about the stranded overheads of council, so that's not part of the plan, but that was part of that material presented in the workshop as the extra costs that sit within council or need to be managed at least within council. And the transition costs are being.
As in though the 9 million is managed in council, so it's not going to be a charge in the waters, so it's not included in the waters?
The stranded overhead would be managed within council. And, and that was like a maximum amount, and so hopefully it would be a lot less and there'll be negotiations about what more could be shared, et cetera, or what other options there are. The transitional costs are included in the model because they were, they are loan funded and they will be represented in the amount of debt that will transfer, that debt from the transitional cost will transfer to the new entity, both for T C C and for the other councils incurring these transitional costs.
And I guess my, not a question, but my observations to date are that we don't tend to find that costs are less than we first think they are. So my, I think the 9 million, we're probably going to say we do need to manage, but, so where does, is that a, is that a, it will just sit and we'll have to manage it within the non-water part of council?
It will, it will appear through the next L T P because that 27, 28 year would be the first year of a budget. So, so yes, obviously we're managing a lot earlier than that through the transition plans, we'll be looking at arms-length agreements of what work or what we would maintain within council for a period of time or what costs would reduce by transferring them. But, but the costs of council appear through the annual plans and long-term planning processes, so that's where you'll see them. And if there are variances.
You're getting confusing for me. So the, the 9 million potential costs will be paid by the ratepayers of Toronga outside of the waters, whatever happens with water, that'll be an additional 9 million of cost to Toronga ratepayers for non-water services?
Yes, unless we find a way of managing it down, and that will be the responsibility of council. But in those early years or at the beginning in the negotiation of the transition, obviously we will try to manage those costs down by saying, well, take those staff as well, or let's organise a two or three-year contract to do this while we transition those costs down. But it is a piece of work that needs to be done.
Council Crowe.
Catherine, on there, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that your, your assumption is zero stranded overheads after 20, was it 34 or whenever, whatever year it was, correct?
That's how we model it, it's very, very high level, just to show you how it flows.
Very, very high level. I guess I'm, I'm conceptually struggling with it still. So for instance, what do we assume would be the in-house waters staff that T C C would have? You know, in the same way that we have for transport, we engage with N Z T A, we have our staff who spend hours and hours, you know, thousands of hours of time working with, engaging with different partners. We have smart growth, we have staff who work with smart growth partners. With waters, we will need people in-house to give us our view of what, you know, here's what we think's happening with this waters thing, because we have very limited influence. And, you know, I know it's been addressed in a briefing we had, but my understanding of the legislation is we cannot set the charges, we cannot control a whole lot of things. It's very prescribed C C O, you know, what it can, what we can and can't do as elected members once it's set up. So our point of influence is to, at a staff level, to have our staff engaged with the waters staff, say, so it's a big development area. And the waters people say, right, we want to cut some costs here because we, you know, we will need to do blah, blah, blah. We need people who can interface with them. And so that's the conceptual sort of, one of the pieces, one of the many things that I've sort of thought in my mind. And I'm like, that's not zero, it can't be zero because we need our staff. We currently have staff in the waters team who are paid for by the waters funding from the ratepayers. But then we'll need this extra funding stream to pay for those, you know, the residual staff who will have to be here that we need. And so, so that's just one example, but there are others. So how can it be zero? And how can we get a bit better in terms of estimating that?
I'm trying to think of a way to frame this. So most of the staff who deal with waters are proposed to move across, but there are staff currently, like in the urban growth planning team, who work in the water space. So we've got a couple of people with engineering expertise and they liaise between the urban growth planning team and the waters team, which sits in waters. And it is proposed that that would remain so that the urban growth planning stays in Toronga City Council with some of that knowledge. And you would then work with a C C O. You would have service delivery agreements between the two as to actually what it is and through your statement of expectations, what it is that you're requiring them to do in terms of planning and how those interfaces, so all of that would need to be worked through. And you would still be retaining in council the development engineers and the rovers. So the development engineers, if a developer is putting, proposing a development or a consent, they review a waters plan from an engineering perspective and they also currently liaise with the waters team. That would still happen, but it would sit probably outside of the business, but those development engineers stay in the business, as are the rovers who would be reviewing and checking conditions of assets before we accept them. So we're proposing that same model, but we haven't gone into the detail and it comes back to this, it's a fine balance between spending a lot of time on planning and thinking and designing systems approaches and budgets, when currently there is not a final firm decision that you want to proceed. So they, they are more detailed that we would work through at that point, but a lot of it you would deal with through the service delivery arrangements and the specifications that sit between the council and the waters organisation. And at any time, council can, as has happened in Auckland, shift the balance of how much planning sits in council and how much planning sits in the water organisation. Currently, our thinking is that it would still, the waters planning and modelling would still sit with the waters entity because that's where it's going to get the benefits of that, the board and also the scale that you would get from an organisation of that nature. But if you get uncomfortable with that and you, the direction that you're setting, you can always revert it back to council in part or in whole, the, the planning element if you wish to. So it's not, you're not stuck with it just because you set it up from that perspective from day one.
Wouldn't that effectively just become a services agreement by another name? I mean, I know it'd still structurally be a C C O, but it'd be a, it'd just be like a services agreement, wouldn't it?
Yes, a services agreement. And so no matter which way you do it, there's always going to have to be an interface at some point in the, in the planning and delivery model. And it's where do you draw that line, how much sits in each organisation? So we've proposed a line that's similar to how waters is currently structured and how we currently do planning and delivery in council. And you, we would give effect to that by a range of service delivery and other agreements and put things in the statement of expectations. If you want to subsequently move that line, you'd have to change those documents to reflect whatever, how far you move the line across. I mean, and there's always will be, if you have a C C O, a line somewhere. have a CCO, a line somewhere. Move on to a, the commitment agreement. So the commitment agreement, it formally commits each of the three councils to continue working together and it forms a basis on which you can, in your water services delivery plan, say that you are proposing a, or your plan is for a three council based on current direction, plan. It's based on, there's a standard template from DIA that we've used, it commits the councils to each dedicate appropriate resources, it puts in place structures across the partnership at multiple levels. And there's a conversation that needs to be thought about, about what does it look like at governance level and that's a decision for you to make, but we're proposing the, the commitment agreement draft has these three levels of executive projects, steering group and project team, which would have a, say, a governance, however you want to do that. The commitment agreement has a transition plan and then that flows through into the water services delivery plan. The draft working agreement to date proposes TCC as a project administration agent, that's similar to how we work Smart Growth, it is purely administrative agent, so someone needs to, if we collectively engage, say, a lawyer, who's going to be the contracting party, there needs to be something because the, the entity is not yet a legal entity, so someone has to take that and it's purely administrative, so as we've suggested that we could do that. It outlines the responsibilities, it allows any council to withdraw, so that was the point I think was being discussed before, provides how you're going to work together if you have differences of view and outlines confidentiality and legoma responses and all of those sort of quite procedural matters are covered in the, in the document.
And just to your comment, allowing a council to withdraw is not the same as asking a council to exit?
I don't think you can ask another council to exit.
So if, if we were three and one didn't come up with due diligence, we don't have the opportunity to stay with two?
Oh, you could, you could do, so you wouldn't exit your commitment agreement, then when you move into your establishment of the CCO, then you'd be saying, actually, we'd be comfortable establishing a CCO that only has these two in it rather than three, I think that's where you'd be, and you'd be signalling that to your partners, I think that's where you would go.
Thanks, and just seeing that the governance structures, these are all brand new governance structures, these are new staff, these are new things we don't currently have, I would, and we're, we're basically not going to establish a CCO till July twenty twenty seven, so I would be very interested before the decision to actually have a breakdown of how many staff and staff costs that we're including in that six point one million because, and we're also, you just talked about a legal advice as well, so we would definitely need that breakdown please and including, yeah, the staff numbers we're talking about and probably the staff numbers councillor Crowther's talking about as the interaction of what stays in TCC to interact with a new CCO.
So we've done some early thinking on that, so there's a series of work streams, so, you know, legal, HR, assets, et cetera, and then each work stream has a early provision of a, of a project plan and then there's a resourcing plan to go with that. So yes, envisaging it would be a mix of staff from each of the three councils and likely some external people who don't currently work with council because the workload will be quite high. I think Hamilton, the Waikato one I heard the other day, they're looking to set up a team of fifty people to move to the transition, so that's the sort of scale they're looking at, ours I don't think is that big, but absolutely, and that'd be, that'd be information that would come along as, as we work through the process, it's just very early thinking, enough to be able to form those early draft budgets, but nothing more than that really at this stage.
Except that we will be making, I will certainly be making a decision on financial, that'll be part of it, so I, any, any assumptions we've made to date, please, we need to be provided before we make the decision.
Yep, so, yeah, we'll come back to that one. Okay, so then the next one is about what the, what a commitment agreement does not do, so it doesn't legally bind you, so there are still further steps to go in the process, it does record the key initial terms, it doesn't finalise the sorts of things that we've been talking about, that's all still work to do, it doesn't bind the council if things change in terms of the legal, it doesn't, it doesn't require you to issue a joint water services delivery plan and we have assumed that you won't be, but that you'll be doing individual ones, but with information from the three, because that was a bit more flexible. It provides indicative expected timings, but they're not ironclad, they're just your current view of milestones. It doesn't allow unilateral decisions, it doesn't address the role of tangata finua, that's clearly a matter still to be traversed, and it doesn't override your own responsibilities and obligations as a council, so that's sort of a bit of a quick summary of, of what this thing does and doesn't do. So once the commitment agreement is executed, it's really just, it's really like, a bit like a memorandum of understanding really, if you're trying to think about what, what is it a bit like? And then after that, there's a whole series of legal work to, or work to be done, which then is executed via way of formal legal agreements and there's the list of some of the more significant ones there, shareholders agreement, constitution, financing arrangements, and most of these and the detail within that would be approved by way of council resolutions, so they would be developed jointly in partnership with whichever councils we're working with and then each of the respective councils would need to sign those off and approve them before you move to, to actually physically sign off and enter into those agreements, so there'll be checkpoints along the way for each of these.
So councillor Baker.
Kiura, thank you. Based on just what's been said and kind of what we know around the relationships between hapu and stuff in the tangata finua space and that this is called a commitment agreement, I think it's actually quite critical that we include in this agreement. I don't know if resolves the word because it's, that's not our job, but there is a word there that would be more appropriate to actually, for us to be proactive about navigating those complexities in some way, because it's kind of missing in what I've read so far, so yeah, we need, I know we have the hui on Friday, but I would be very optimistic if we get something solid out of that, you know what I mean, so it'd be good for us to commit to that through this.
And it also sits in the principles, which is an attachment to the commitment agreement, so yeah.
Deputy Mayor, you've a-
Oh, sorry, I thought, I thought you were reaching for you.
So, so we would like some feedback on the commitment agreement, but as stated at the beginning, our recommendation is the detail of that we do in close, so you can give us feedback and then we can share that with the other partner councils. Attached to the commitment agreement is the key milestones, so we've, they're set quite a high level, but it does sort of give you an outline of what it is that we'd be proposing to do. The other councils obviously are going through an election, so that does impact on their ability to actively participate and give their views on things, so we've had to build that in, so that's items five, five and six, the sort of the due diligence runs over the same time, a lot of the due diligence will be completed at a technical level, but we will clearly be reporting the findings of that and you would form a view as to whether you're satisfied with that or not, so where the other councils are not yet operational post the election, that will be a matter that needs to be addressed. And then what's generally happening is the board and the executive teams are being recruited in well advance of the start date, sometimes they are appointing a partial board, say like two, three members to start to give direction and then once you get closer to your actual start date, the, the other members of a board are established, so that's sort of generally what's happening around the country. Again, they're all decisions for you to make, but we've just sort of followed that as the general layout and then you'd also, actually then it's establishing your processes around that and then actually go through the appointment. And then you start the actual transfer of assets and your actual appointment of staff to transition staff from existing councils through, so there's a whole, what's the organisation structure going to look like, what roles are there, opportunities for redeployment from one entity into the next, selection processes, it's quite a comprehensive piece of work to actually move people. I think we've, our looks, there's about a hundred and forty Taronga City Council staff are predominantly working in the water space and would, so that sort of gives you a sort of scale of what we're looking at, the other councils are sitting sort of well under the sort of forty FTE mark for me, I'm looking at Cathy if I've got those numbers about right, so yeah. So just gives you a bit of a feel for scale of what we're talking about, so you know, you've probably got a couple of hundred people plus that need to, you know, whose jobs are in change and that has to be managed appropriately as a employment change process, which is not a small piece of work in itself. So you happy with that, so that, so that sits as an attachment, as a draft working attachment to the commitment agreement? Yep, keep going.
Crowther.
I listened in to some other councils' discussions around, you know, getting towards this end of the whole decision-making process and interesting was Rotorua and they have been sort of ahead of us, I think, all the way through in terms of the way they've sort of discussed some of their planning and they've stuck to where they were, when they went out to consultation around having an in-house preference for now to, to meet the three September deadline and then to commit over the, in their case they're using twenty twenty eight, but my understanding informally is they, they were open to twenty twenty seven to have a multi-council CCO. And so when I heard Mayor Tapsill's commentary around that, I thought it was a highly articulate but logical set of thoughts because it said, we're under pressure from the government to do this quickly, we need to meet the legislative deadlines, but we haven't, you know, you can hear by the answers to some of the questions, we haven't had a chance to pull things together to the level of detail that at least some of us would like. And that's no reflection on our staff, it's just a reflection of the timeframe that it's operating within. So her view was what the majority of your council wanted and what the staff there had eventually got to, which was go with what we can now, which is to put something in, put a stake in the ground to say, here's the direction we're heading, but we don't have to commit to it fully until after third of September, in their case, a long time after, we could pick whatever date we wanted. So I guess backtracking to a meeting a couple of, two or three months ago, you know, have we looked at that as an option that could be presented next Monday, that could be to do the, what I referred to at the time as the Rotorua model, which is to say the preferred option in the long term is a multi-council CCO, but we, you put in the actual compliance with the legislation for third of September that we're starting off as an in-house and we have a, we have another off-ramp, we have an off-ramp that could allow us all to consider whatever level of information we want and, and in the words of Mayor Tapsill, to take our community and iwi, I think she mentioned, well, she certainly mentioned at one point, along with them on that journey because the timing was too tight to do that. So I guess it's framing up the reason for my question, but to ask explicitly, can staff put an option in for Monday along those lines?
So the report is currently drafted, doesn't have that as an option, it hasn't been one that we've been asked to explore to date. The Water Services Delivery Plan needs to identify if you are going to go joyless, if you went in that option, when you would be with someone else. So you'd have to have a clear date and bring those financial numbers together and the question is, who would you be partnering with, because it would be a different proposition to what you're currently working on with those partner councils who are currently looking to one July twenty twenty seven, so it's not one that you could do solely on your own without engaging with them as to whether that would be a poss, an option they would want to entertain, so that would, but you, yeah, so, so you could change the start date if you wanted to, but again, unclear whether the other councils would do something which it aligns, you can only do a multi-council CCO when you've got a partner to work with. The other point I would make is the thing that's changed, which we are reflecting in the report for next Monday, is that the town has been very clear around city deal and, and the waters direction, so unclear on what their view would be around a phased implementation approach, I don't know what that would look like.
Yeah, just, just to be explicit, to address those points, that what was in my mind was, we could even, in the case of Rotorua, they put twenty twenty eight, we could keep twenty twenty seven, we could keep the same prospective partners, we could show that we're willing to partner with the government on the regional deal or sub-regional deal, whatever it is, and to explore those options in, in good faith and it would not necessarily change the final decision, I agree. So in that sense, it could postpone the inevitable, but on the other hand, it does give us an off-ramp, which in my view, seeing it's the single biggest council decision, I think, probably in our lifetimes, I would think, that, you know, it seems worth doing it right and, and I look at our neighbours across from Rotorua and say, they've thought this through a lot and they've got to that point where they are saying, rather than have a split council vote causing all sorts of problems, rather than have communities split down the middle, rather than iwi being upset about it, let's work through those, all those details that have been raised up there, work it through calmly, we, all we're doing is buying ourselves a period of time so that what we send in on the third, we're compliant with, we could still end up at every step of the way choosing whichever option it would be that we choose next week, but it gives us time to make that in a fully informed way and I guess that's what I'm suggesting.
Is it, is it just, I'm trying to, is it not the same thing in the fact that, you know, yes, we're making a decision, you know, next week, but there is off-ramps, you know, we can leave for the commitment agreement allows us to leave, if the information that we find out is actually significantly different to what we think and we go, actually this doesn't work for us anymore, there is an option to get out, you know, we've got, we're basically making a commitment that we're looking to a CCO, we're going to deliver it in-house for next two years, we're going to deliver it in a multi-council CCO, assuming that, that that's a decision and, and that's where we're going. Like, I, I don't see that really any different to what Rotorua, apart from they've got an extra year ultimately, which is twenty twenty eight, you know, and, and effectively they're just kicking the can down the road, so, you know, I, I just don't understand how there's a significant difference there.
I, I guess what I'm saying is that, or what I'm hearing, is that we will get presented with a lot of multi-council CCO information, but we will not be presented every step of the way with the three options in parallel. And for instance, something like Stormwater, if we choose to go down a certain track, will we get the clear, you know, will every step of the way, will we go back to those, right, you've chosen a multi-council CCO, but we'll still present to you all three options for the in-house, TCC-only CCO and the multi-council CCO, because to me, that's, that's the difference that I'm suggesting, that's what Rotorua is suggesting and that's what other councils have kind of considered that and just stuck to in-house. Their view was, in your words, I think, you know, don't kick the can down the road, just stick to in-house and then at any time we can get into a CCO, but I get the sense it's not a mood for doing that on our council, I think we're wanting to treat it a bit more seriously to go into a multi-council CCO, we put it as our preferred option. So I'm suggesting not kick the can down, but just to make sure we're fully informed at each step, it, it doesn't necessarily change the final timeline, it just means we have more information to consider when we make that crucial decision.
So just a couple of comments on that, so if you are still sticking with one July twenty twenty seven, then you actually need to get working on a comprehensive programme to put that in place and the reason why we moved from one July twenty twenty six is to get there from now, if you made the decision today, it's not possible because there'll lead time to achieve that and that's, I don't think every council pretty much has moved, a lot of councils were looking at one July twenty sixth and they're all saying the same. So if you make a decision that you're still keeping your options open, to achieve that, you're still going to have to make all the commitment of the investment to plan and deliver and, and set up your teams and start doing all the work to get to, otherwise you can't deliver it by one July twenty twenty seven. The other thing is on the Stormwater, as we said, our recommendation is that you continue to explore that, so there will be further options, but if you make a decision on the fourteenth that you are going to proceed with a CCO, then in terms of water and wastewater, it's not a proposition that we would continue to bring you options for standalone and in-house when you have at that point said they're not the options, but for Stormwater, there's an explicit recommendation that we continue to explore and that you make a subsequent decision, so you're, you've passed a resolution which we think should- So you're, you've passed a resolution, which we think should stand, which is all water services to be delivered by one entity. Doesn't necessarily mean that the ownership and everything else needs to be with that entity. So that's, that's what we think needs to be further explored and assessed. And that would, so therefore we would continue to bring you options around that until you landed on a preferred approach for Stormwater.
Final question on it then. So what I'm hearing is that until, two weeks ago, we thought we were going to be kicking off on, well, elected members thought we were going to be kicking off on July twenty twenty six. We'd questioned the timeframe, we were told it would be tight. But that you thought you could do it. You're suggesting now that in order to get to a whole year later, twelve months later, we couldn't delay any decisions by potentially two, three months in order to be fully informed when we make those decisions. You need all twelve months, you've gone from saying it, it'll be July twenty twenty six to twenty twenty seven and all of a sudden, you need the whole extra year and we can't have any time. I'm, I'm really struggling Christine with how that can be.
Yep. So I, I don't know what comments were made when I'm away, so maybe Jeremy, but what we've always said is we need to work further on those work stream plans and understand how pre-, what, what sits in the work stream plans and what sort of level of work would be involved with that. And so we have done a little bit more on that in the last few weeks to shake that up. We've always thought that July twenty sixth was probably going to be quite tight. But as we've done some further work, and it's still quite a lot more work to do. So I can't say to you, no, another month won't work or another two months, because it comes back to, we haven't, we've done enough work to get a bit of a feel. But we don't want to invest too much staff resources in creating work stream and detailed plans when at this point in time, you actually haven't made a decision that you want to proceed. So it's a very fine balance between us doing enough that we can inform you, so you can make a decision and us not preempting a decision and basically wholly investing our resources to deliver something that actually does not have a decision, because that would be inappropriate to do. So it's, we're just trying to manage that balance. Um, otherwise we could, we could give you really good information, but to do that, we've got to pump a whole lot more resource into it and that's rate pay money and is that appropriate when you haven't yet made a decision that you want to proceed? So we're trying to do enough to give you a bit of a steer. Um, but we haven't timelined all of this out to, to detail. We have a bit of a feel. We've got quite reasonable gants charts, but I can't say to you, another month won't work or another two months won't work. We just do not have the detail.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you and sorry, I'm leaping head a little bit. So, and I might have been told already, but forgive me, but so if we have a joint CCO, so I think thirty-five percent of our rates go into water, is that our, for every hundred dollars, it's thirty-one or thirty-five cents, I think, go to water, something like that. So, a CCO operates, will their agenda and then board meetings be public? Yes? And so the minutes would all be available, they're all available though, as CCOs, because currently I don't think our CCOs do have public board meetings.
Clarify, so the waters organisation and the water legislation is not the same as a CCO under the Local Government Act. And so it has a whole series of quite bespoke provisions that only apply to water organisations. So we've actually internally tried to change our language lately and call it a water organisation. Legally it is a CCO, but actually it's a different beast in terms of its legal obligations and of the relationship between councils. So then we call it water organisations, I'll let Stephen talk about the, the detail, but that, I think that's, you're asking about the distinction between, say, something like um, bay venues and a, a multi-council water organisation. Their statutory framework has differences.
Right. So, so thank you. That, alright, so the water CCO, the meeting, the board meetings will be public?
Correct. And um, the constitution will still need to be developed jointly by yourselves as the shareholder and councils and, and however you wish to frame that up is within your own control. So, yeah. But the, the legislation is, as Christine says, is for water organisations, which are slightly different to, under the LGA. But it gives you the ability to get whatever you require from these boards, public meetings to be held, how they're going to be reported. Remembering that also have to disclose a whole bunch of other stuff to the regulators, which you will also be uh, informed about, so it's.
It's just, it's the, the public being able to know what's going on, have the agenda and the meetings to be public, so.
Definitely.
But if the councils decided the constitution didn't require that, then that wouldn't be, so it's not a legislative requirement as it is with, with us that, that those meetings are public and the minutes are available.
Um, I'd have to check with DI on the latest, latest bit of revised legislation. We haven't worked, it's about a five hundred do-, page documents, I'd have to check.
That's why I'm asking you and I didn't have to read it. Okay, thank you. So, because I think that's really important. If thirty-five or thirty-one percent of rates are going to waters and there's issues with waters, we're going to be asked to explain it and we're going to need to be able to say why certain things have happened. But to me, it's an interesting, therefore conundrum, a, somebody's asked to chair such an organisation and they're not chairing a board like a normal board if those, their meetings are public. So it's quite a, a difference and I wouldn't want to find that the chair says, yes, I'll chair it provided the meetings aren't public. So it's just to me really important that, that transparency um, continues to exist um, in whatever organisation we have. Because currently, under status quo, it's all transparent.
Um, just in terms of next steps, so obviously we've got the report on the fourteenth. Um, we'll give you the information uh, for the three councils by the end of the week and a draft Water Services Delivery Plan by the end of the week. It's proposed that the fifth of August was when the three councils, um, if they have each by then passed um, resolutions around adoption of the Water Services Delivery Plan and the commitment agreement. Uh, chief executive will do their sign-off and then we'd submit that. So that's sort of the key stuff that's happening over the next um, few weeks really. So that's all that we wanted to cover. Um, happy to, happy to hear the questions or discussion and if there's any specific things that you would like us to take back to the partner councils around the statement of commitment, happy to receive that information. I think there's one point that's come up and we're happy to talk about any of those details. And sure call us to whether you move to public excluded for that or not.
Councillor Scoler.
So we did just, and we talked briefly about um, voting rights across such an organisation. Again, to me, that's, we, we definitely around the table had quite different views and it's to me quite a biggie, um, particularly with the amount of assets and um, uh, that would, that are coming from Taronga. So again, that sort of decision happens after we've agreed we're going to do something, but we actually might find that we can't meet a resolution, we can't resolve it and then we pull out. Is that how it would happen?
Yes, and it's identified in the commitment agreement, I think, from memory. Um, but it's that those, um, that there are a series of decisions that would only be made by council and that we need to work through them together and that is, is one of them. So things like, um, you know, the shareholding arrangements, the voting arrangements, all of those sorts of things. Um, so one of the things you need to give consideration to is how do you want to negotiate and discuss those with the other councils? So there was a suggestion the other day that each council might nominate, say, two elected members that would be part of a governance negotiating team. And that, and that those people would be taking some of those conversations back to the other councils, because it's hard to work with three lots of ten, thirty people. Um, staff can do some stuff in the background, but a lot of, a lot of these actual, getting down to some of that nitty gritty is really governance questions. Um, and how, how do you want to structure yourself to do that? So that's something that, that, you know, we'd like some guidance on, on what you'd like to do there.
Which is in, interesting because you've used the lack of ability of thirty elected members to make decisions or how, how difficult that might be. But we're sending up an entity that's meant to be doing that for us and yet we're going to then be interacting with that entity. So you've still got thirty members that are needing to interact with a new entity altogether. And still we think we're going to get better decisions out of it. And I'm, I'm struggling a little bit with how that governance and hearing everyone's views and putting them in the right percentage of what they own of that entity, how that all works. But that's just for me to work out.
Yeah, my question is just to clarify which piece of government legislation or act of this is being formed under? Number three?
Just for Mike, so the Water Services Delivery Bill number three and the Select Committee Report came out on Wednesday or Thursday last week. Um, and we haven't fully digested it yet, Friday?
CJ, it's the preliminary arrangements.
Preliminary arrangements act?
Yeah.
Yeah, the preliminary arrangements act, so yeah. So, so as part of section, or part fourteen of that, it references the Local Government Act, which sort of governs how we form joint entities with other councils. And under that, it's got several different arrangements. So we as elected members get to choose which framework that this is governed under?
Uh, so just in answer to that one, we are submitting our Water Services Delivery Plan under section thirteen because we've got the ring-fenced financials. Section fourteen is if you were delivering a joint Water Services Delivery Plan. So although we're showing some consolidated numbers, which is what the Department of Internal Affairs have asked us to do, which will form part E of, and going back to those early slides, which with the blue and the green on it, it still means that we're submitting under section thirteen of that act. Does that answer your question?
It does, because I do like some parts of fourteen as well. Because fourteen references the Local Government Act, which then references ownership of the entity or ownership of assets of the entity. So we need to work through that.
So the pack that you have, um, there are some additional slides in, under the, underneath this and I've cut and past section thirteen into those particular slides. Yeah, there they are.
I've read thirteen, yeah.
Have we got any other questions? Have we got anything that we do want to discuss around the commitment agreement that you think might be better done in publicly excluded? Is that a yes or, yeah? Is there any other?
Yeah. Um, I, I guess the juggle, as I said, is um, that there'll be a, there's this percentage of proposed assets, which is, I believe the sixty-four percent was used, um, but certainly more than the fifty. And then there are a bunch of other things, some of which we can discuss in public excluded around decision-making and so forth. But in terms of the actual financial, can we just get really explicit on when, when the, what the implications are for TCC of having more than fifty percent shareholding in an entity and, and how that could impact standard impasse and all that sort of stuff? So if you just do a concise summary, as I think you've almost done before for me, but I'd just like to get it clear.
Yeah, so, so standard impasse haven't actually finalised their position on how they'll kind of look at the debt of TCC when there is a majority-owned CCO. Um, and, but the indication is that, um, while the other guarant-, while we have other guarantors, that they would take our, our portion of the debt and look at that. So when we consolidate our accounts, we'll consolidate the whole amount. But when they're assessing, they have a way of adjusting for the fact there are other guarantors for parts of that debt. But as I say, they haven't actually agreed collectively how they work that one through. If it was a single council CCO, obviously they would look at consolidating the full amount of debt.
It's just to be explicit, like the implication for some of, and not just the councils we're currently proposing with, but there has been explicit talk amongst some of those councils that, of course, Taronga would have to stay below fifty percent because of implications of that. Now, can you just address that? I don't, I mean the political side, I mean in terms of the financial implications. They are suggesting that there's information that means we would want to stay below fifty percent. You have no reason to think that that would be desirable in any point of view?
No, we, we've just had that, the conversation we had with standard impasse, so. Um, and, and what they had said is when they advised the government several years ago, um, about whether the CCOs could then avoid any sort of um, assessment of that debt load on the parent. They had only been asked to look at councils less than fifty percent share, which is why they haven't quite finalised their calculation method for us.
All right, if that's all the um, public questions, um, I thank everyone for tuning in today. Um, and we will just go to publicly excluded to, uh, discuss some of the um, more sensitive information around dealing with our partners. Uh, so I call for a mover and seconder to go into publicly.